This discussion one. Good evening. Today is Tuesday, December nineteenth. We'd like to welcome you to our board meeting. So, roll call, all board members are present in the boardroom. That includes members Wilson, Lessons, Jacobs, Holloman, Higgins, Donley, and Bellamy. We also have our student representative Joshua Pack. Our superintendent, Dr. Bryant. And our recording, not recording, but our executive assistant, Ms. Amanda Foster. So we'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting. Now turn it over to Josh for our, the flag salute and the land acknowledgement. Please stand.
We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Denina people of the Upper Cook Inlet. For thousands of years, the Denina people have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. ASD is committed to diversity and inclusion and is with honor and respect that we recognize all indigenous people who live and learn in our community.
Thank you, Joshua. So again, I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting. And I'd like to also thank you for supporting the work of this school board. And the Anchorage School District. We want to thank our students, our parents, teachers, staff. Partners and the entire community for your investment in our district. And we appreciate that you give your time, your talent, and your tax dollars to make education possible. That brings us to item three on the agenda, which is the approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda as presented. Second.
I do have one, we have to, I would like to add an item to the agenda. In our December first board meeting, we had a technical report on, help me remember what it was, Amanda. It was a guardrail number two. I think it, okay. It was on, if it was in Board Connect for, we normally get our guardrail reports in Board Connect. But we approve them here at the meeting. And so I'd like to add that under action item F1 would be our guardrail reporting on, on guardrail number two.
So moved.
Any opposition to adding that item to the agenda?
I think we need a second to proceed.
Oh, do we have a second to add the guardrail report? Second, thank you. Moved in second to add that guardrail report. Any opposition to adding it to the agenda? That is approved. So now we'll take a motion to approve the agenda as amended. That's already done. Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure that you, there's no opposition. Thank you. So that brings us to our student report. Joshua.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm happy to say that we had a packed and productive December meeting. This just last Tuesday, we had twenty-three schools present in spite of the bulk of the snow that day. And it was quite dangerous, but I'm glad that we had a quiet number of students show up. We resumed right from where we left off since our last November meeting, which was canceled because of the snow. And for the first sort of business was of course agendas and meetings minutes, but then right after we got into our school spotlights. Where we highlighted service, high school, frontier charter school, Golden View Middle School, and Begich Middle School. And they went over their student leadership structures. They also went over their clubs. As well as some of their highlights, including music trips that Golden View Middle School takes. And Begich's family nights, as well as the heart model for front two charter school and services partners club. We also had member lessons give a very well-informed and thoughtful rundown of the budget deficit. For the high school students and the middle school students at the student advisory board meeting. And we also mentioned the survey, I believe it was concluded now, but during that time it was open and we have students have discussion questions. That most students share about the coming deficit. And we also had general reports. Which was under the question, what do you want to know to better run your leadership program? Most students from each of these schools highlighted a want of involvement or more involvement in school spirits or school activities as well as fundraising. And the whole essence of the student advisory board is for students to ask students from other schools on how to approach those problems. And I believe that we did a good job doing that last meeting. We also had a first school business partnership report from our middle school. And he talked about the goal panel events as well as how to get businesses engaged in schools as well as the approved budget. And we had a rundown of parliamentary procedure by our senior advisory board advisor, Lam Willis, and at the end, we discussed and got into pretty passionate debate about the resolution that I brought forth. Which was about the student representatives on school boards as well as their privileges and rights. During these meetings and we did not be, we were not able to finish discussion on that. So it is, it has been postponed. Until the next meeting, we had four resolutions ready, but we only got to one, but I will be reporting on those next resolutions in the next coming meetings. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Joshua. Any questions, member lessons?
Thank you. It was an impressive agenda. I really appreciated that the student government advisors were in attendance as well. It was, there was a critical mass of engaged students and engaged teacher leaders, which was wonderful. I wanted to amplify one of the students' questions. Because I think it could help in our future conversations, but the student did ask, how are charter schools impacted by the budget crisis? And my answer was something to the effect of, well, they're dealing with rising costs. And sort of a flat, a flat dollar at the same time. So whether they're buying supplies or dealing with rent in some cases, but I think that's maybe an interesting question that other community members might be interested in as well as in understanding how how does our funding situation impact the array of school choices that we offer?
Dr. Bryant?
That's a great question, member lessons, because there are community members out there that have a perception that charter schools aren't impacted by flat funding and that's simply not the case. I don't want to name charter schools in this venue, but there are charter schools that are struggling to pay their own rents and leases. That are considering their staffing allocations, just like we're struggling to figure out how we're going to balance their budgets. So flattened inadequate funding impacts all schools, including charter schools, and that's important for all families to know.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for Joshua? Member Darling, you had a request regarding Joshua's name being on the agenda. Did you want to bring that up now?
Thank you, Madam President. It just occurred to me that while our minutes reflect our student representatives attendance, our agenda does not list all the members and superintendent and the secretary, but it doesn't list our student representative. And I would, I would request that in the future, the agenda indicate are the the student representative and the student representative name on the agenda also.
Okay, thank you. And we actually have, we have had conversations about that with at least Ms. Foster and I, and we will make that happen. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Pack on his report? Seeing none. We are going to move on to item C, which is our goal monitoring report. As you recall, we we were given the attendance report, report, technical report. So tonight we're going to have our conversation on that report. So you can see that all components of the report, I'm looking for my notes here. Hold on one minute. So that I can cover it. I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to wing it because I don't have my notes handy. Anyway, each month, for those of you who, thank you guys for coming forward. But each month, the first of the month, we receive a technical report on one or more of our goals and our guardrails. And so we we have a time to review the report and then to come back at our next meeting to have a conversation. So the report before you is part of our college career and life readiness goal, and the indicator that we're looking at tonight is the attendance rate. And you can see that the, the goal itself is beginning with the freshman class of September twenty twenty. The percentage of high school students graduating life ready as well as college and or career ready will increase from a baseline of a number to be determined to ninety percent in the spring of twenty twenty-six. Now, I will say that we are in the process of revising our goals. So at some point within the next month or so, that goal, we will still have a college and career goal. It will just be worded a little bit differently with different metrics. Attendance is a strong indicator of success for college career as well as life. So there, and there is a direct correlation between students who attend school regularly and higher academic achievement levels. A missed school day is a lost opportunity for our students. ASD strives to increase the percentage of students attaining ninety percent attendance rate. Missing at least ten percent of days in a school year for any reason, including excused and unexcused absences is considered chronic absenteeism. So with that, if you will look on page three, we have the overall indicator. The several components, you will notice that there are at least five years of data. This superintendent has given an evaluation of performance of this goal and with, and other information is also provided relative to those areas that are of interest to the board. So seeing all components present, it's time for us to have the conversation. I'd like to begin with the who, what, when, where questions, and then we'll move to the how questions if possible. So who would like to ask the first question? Yes, member Donovan.
Oh, you, Madam President. So one parent recently asked me, why was ten percent absence defined as chronic absenteeism? And I didn't know the answer to that. I'm just always, I've seen it labeled that way, but I don't know where that originates from.
Thank you for the question. So really it is a ubiquitous metric. In other words, when you look at the research across many different institutions, ten percent is the metric that's really most often cited. As sort of that threshold where absences become detrimental. And you start seeing other outcomes, whether it's grades or social indicators or credits. A whole variety of things that are negatively impacted once you meet that ten percent threshold and it's widely accepted.
So ten percent, kids are in school a hundred and eighty days, ten percent is eighteen days.
That's correct.
What, what gets weighed out of that? Anything? Because that was one of my questions as well, member Donovan. Or is it just when kids are not in school?
So an absence is an absence. However, you know, if it's a sporting event or a school sponsored event. We track that information, but it's, they're counted as present for those types of things. But essentially it's an excused absence, an unexcused absence, an out of school suspension. Or family trips, those are all just considered absences. And it's really not about, you know, a few days here and there. It's that cumulative effect of hitting those eighteen days or more.
So does it matter if kids have the opportunity to make up? To make the work up? And then what does that look like?
Yeah, so ASD has a policy and practice in place that allows students to make up work. Typically, if you miss a day, your teachers would give you by the policy an extra day to make that up. If you miss two days, you'd have two days to make up work and so on and so forth. It's critical that our schools allow students to make up the work for obvious reasons. As it keeps students engaged, connected to the curriculum and learning and moving forward academically.
Other questions, member lessons? Did you have your mic on?
Well, I, I just wanted to, that's something I've been thinking about a little bit is the opportunity to make up work. And I just, I see the benefit from a learning standpoint. That's the end goal, right? You want the student to do the work. But I also sort of wonder if, gee, I've got to, you know, another day to do the work that I didn't go to school today. It didn't get done. Like, is it also a disincentive? And are we saying that, well, maybe it is, but in the end it's better to have that makeup time? That's a rambling thought level question.
It's a good question. I'll take a stab at an answer. Thank you, board member lessons. So I think, I think the first comment, and I made it earlier, but it's important to keep kids engaged in the curriculum. Curriculum is sequenced often quite thoughtfully and deliberately by teachers. If students miss work, right, then they're out of sequence and it takes a lot of work and focus to get caught up. To your point, are we creating a disincentive by allowing them opportunities to make up work? I think my response to that would, would focus on all of the many valid reasons that students miss school. There are state sanctioned excused absences for religious observance, cultural observances. Emergencies in the family is another one. And of course illness. Which we've seen a spade of recently and in sort of the post-COVID era. A lot of mental health issues as well. So it would be really hard for a district to, to determine one valid and another not as it relates to makeup work.
Thank you. I, I think that it's important that we offer it, but I also have been just sort of wondering about that as well.
But it's all, it's to make enough of the work, have any opportunity to make up the work. So each teacher, they have six, right? Each teacher provides opportunities for each day missed. Teachers have to manage that makeup for each kid that misses their class. For whatever reason. So, and it's up to the student to make it up, right? There's no mandatory makeup. It's mandatory that they have the opportunity to, but there is no, no requirement that they, that they take advantage of that.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that's correct. Yep.
All right, okay. Member Higgins, and then we'll go to Joshua.
Yeah, I'll try to look at this and trying to say in a perfect world, what could we be doing to reduce this? And, and some of that is having a system that kids are sick or something, they're trapped, the parents are traveling, I don't know what it. But they can actually retain it off work, I mean off school. Where they can, you know, just like we do remote learning, if there were circumstances with that, we could do more of that. If we had more online systems, they could end up doing that and adjusting to it of what they're doing. We could be monitoring that. Within it, I know that some of the different programs I've seen with tablets and other things, you don't require the the internet, but there's other approaches to it. I guess if I'm trying to look at this, other than saying kids ought to be coming to school. The question is, how can we keep them engaged when the circumstances beyond the kids' control? And is there something we should be doing or could be doing to at least discuss to try to improve this situation from the adult standpoint? Rather than putting it all on a student? I didn't say I was gonna give you an easy question. I hope not.
Yeah, so member Higgins, that's a great point you make and terrific question. I would begin by saying that you hit upon one of the reasons why we think in the post-COVID era, we've had such a difficult time seeing a return of the attendance rate we had three, four, or five years ago. And that is that we, we built an online platform that allows students to access curriculum. And stay caught up while they're out of school, right? Keep in mind, we told students for two years, if you're feeling sick.
Stay home.
Stay home, right? So we're really in a period of reestablishing expectations. And that's, that's an important thing I would emphasize and really something the leadership team in ASD is working very diligently on. In preparing for this presentation, we spent some time looking at data today, and you may be interested to know that we've got about a quarter to a third of our students who have that GPA we've been talking about, two point seven or above, that college readiness metric. Who are missing between thirty, twenty and thirty percent of school. And this is something that education leaders at the schools are bringing to our attention, right? So we're in an interesting in-between phase of serving the interests of students in remote learning. And then of course inviting them and really needing them to return. We know that optimum learning happens when students are in the classroom at school.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Pack?
Well, my original question was going to be, why was there such a drop, like a steep drop off after the twenty twenty-one school year, but it's because of COVID, I assume. And then my follow-up question would have been, what are the considerations in bringing back or establishing that rule or kind of common theme that students should be coming to school in the following year?
So in general, this is something that we've really focused on with attendance this year. So you have seen a lot of communications go out from the communication team. This goes with the reestablishing expectations and just reinforcing what that means, the importance of routines. We've also done a lot with principal leadership to talk about things that they can do in terms of attendance tracking, but also like celebrating improvement on attendance. Or really getting to the root causes of why students might be absent. And here at the district, what we're trying to do is figure out how we can assist in looking at that data, making sure that they have access to it, that they know what it means. And then the resources and tools that are available to them to reach out to those families and really try to get those students back in class.
Yes, I'd like to add one more comment. Great question, Joshua. The other thing I would add to it is that we realize from the research that one of the most important things educators can do is, is to continue to build relationships with families, with communities. Most importantly, that relationship shared between teachers and students. You'll see in the principal expectations document that we created this year, which really articulates the priorities of the principals' work at each of their respective schools. We've highlighted the importance of increasing that metric of students who feel safe, who report feeling safe in school. We've also asked principals to focus on the metric of students who have a trusted adult in the building. And we believe strongly that these two metrics serve many purposes, one of which is to improve attendance.
Great. So can, can you share, first of all, do we have the data broken out by gender? Is it in this new copy? Oh, cool. Awesome. Because it wasn't, it wasn't in the first one, was it? It was? Okay, I missed it. Oh, I see it at the very bottom of page five. So it doesn't look like, because I was curious to know if girls were missing more school than boys. And it looks like at least for twenty twenty-two, just slightly less, girls are not missing as much. So do we, do we have any idea why kids aren't coming to school? What, what do these principals tell us? What are some primary reasons other than family, travel, vacation? Sports trips? I mean, why are kids not coming to school?
I'll stop, excuse me. Thank you for the question. I'll give it a shot and then I can hand it off. To your first point about the gender, just to kind of touch base on that, you see the twenty-one, twenty-two, and then twenty-two, twenty-three data. I did go on our dashboard and just so that you know, you all have access on that public dashboard. It's an amazing resource. And I actually clicked through not only, not only the gender, but by every single ethnicity. And the gender gap is typically within one percent for male and female across all ethnicities. And so there's really not a lot of disparity in terms of gender that's up to date currently. You know, the, the question about why students are not coming to school in terms of those chronically absent students, I think it's a really critical question. And it really is leading us to be, to really inquire more about that. It's hard to speculate specifically in ASD, but one thing that's really interesting that I think is important to share is I dug into the research from the both the Department of Education, the federal government, and E K C, multiple large organizations, the RAND organization about chronic absenteeism. And what we're seeing in Anchorage is mirrored across the nation. Even down to the subgroups that are most prevalently chronically absent. And it was really enlightening as well as thought provoking and really makes us realize that we do need to do more work. But one of, some of the research suggests, when we're looking at some of those subgroups and some of our populations, such as economically disadvantaged. There are some underlying factors that definitely are more prevalent, more often referenced in the research. Things like homelessness, food security, healthcare is actually a really significant factor that's referenced a great deal. Safe pathways or access to schools is referenced. And so those were some of the key underlying characteristics, but we definitely need to think more deeply about our specific population in Anchorage, even though it is emulating what we're seeing around the nation.
Thank you. I think last time we talked a little bit about how we take attendance. So say at East High School, do we take attendance six periods a day? And a kid has to be there all six period? No, how, how does that work?
I can take that one. I can take that one. Um so so um it it depends on how the kids are scheduled. And so every time a a student in in elementary, it's AM and PM, right? So it's half a day or a full day, essentially tardies are up until a certain point in the morning. Um in our middle school and high schools, depending on the number of periods, um just to give you a very quick example. We don't have ten periods in our 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 high schools, but if we did and a student was in class, seven of those ten periods for that day, they would have a seventy percent. Attendance rate. And so that fractional attendance rate is calculated across each and every day for their enrollment period. So it's based on period.
Okay, okay, great. Um member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Um so first, more of a general question that isn't really in the the data, but I guess I'm curious for administration's perspective. Some of the research I've done has indicated that it's pretty clear that mental health is a a factor um in chronic absenteeism. We know that Alaska youth are predisposed to some of the highest adverse childhood experiences scores in the nation. We know that the Department of Justice um issued a pretty scathing report indicating that we over institutionalize youth. And we have um a lack of community-based supports for youth and they recommended investing significant funds. Um into community-based supports and specifically named school-based services as a potential way to to lift up and address that problem, which. Could in turn then reverse the the trend with chronic absenteeism. Have we, as a district, reached that consensus? Are we on board with that kind of that school of thought? And then have we? Have we analyzed whether or not there's a link? And do we have the ability to analyze if there's a link in the the population's chronically absent? And the the challenges associated with a a lack of unaddressed mental health challenges?
Yeah, thank you, Board Member Jacobs. It's a great question. I actually reached out to our mental health services department today, essentially requesting the information you just did. So that's forthcoming. Reports of mental health are hard to track as sometimes they're made in an official capacity. And sometimes you might suspect a student is struggling with mental health issues. Um I can say in my experience as a principal, oftentimes you might receive a phone call from a parent who indicates that their student is having a hard day. For example, and they're gonna stay home. You might hear the student is having a mental health day, quote unquote. But it's not documented as such, right? It's anecdotal. So we'll work with our mental health department to see what we can pull up in terms of of data. I think uh you'd be hard pressed to find an administrator or school leader who does not believe that mental health. And anxiety is impacting our attendance rate. And every effort is being made in ASD to expand the work that mental health services provides. Um not only to our students in schools, but also to our teachers and our teacher leaders.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick follow-up. Yeah, like more of a comment than a follow-up question um of a different kind of, that's okay. Yep, so I appreciate that. Thank you for the answer. I know it's really hard data to quantify and um we're piecing together information without all the the background information. In in watching the the dialogue regarding chronic absenteeism unfold this year, I haven't seen mental health addressed. By us, the district as a contributing factor, and maybe it helps naming that, I don't know, weighing the pluses and minuses of of that. But especially given the DOJ report, um if this isn't a case where the jury's still out, we're as a state failing youth. Uh by providing inadequate resources um at the community level, which is causing over institutionalization. So um the verdict is in. I think it's fair to link those two. There's a causal relationship there. Separately, with your permission, Madam President. I was, the last time we talked student attendance, um we talked about, or at least I was curious about suspension rates. The attendance attendance-related incidents, whether it be um truancy or tardies. I think results in over a third of our total in-school susp- or total suspensions period. I guess the first question is, when a student is attending an in-school suspension, do they count as having attended school that day? And then we recognize, I'm sure that a student in an in-school suspension isn't in class. And although it might not be absent, the benefits aren't there. So are we actively, it's, we've got, we're at the twenty yard line there, right? We've got students in the building. Are we evaluating ways to get them back in class? And if there's a benefit there versus a student who's not present at all, it was kind of at the fifty yard line. Thank you.
Uh thank you for the question. Yes, um when a sco- a student is in school, for example, in an in uh school suspension. Um they are counted as present. The the school has some other internal codes that they can use. Um that indicates the student is in school, even if they're working with a counselor, for example, and practicing uh pro-social skills. Or whatever might be uh related to the incident uh that was occurring. And so if, as long as they're in that building, um they would be con- considered present.
I can add to that. Yeah, I do appreciate.
Yeah, I just wanted to address your question, which is a great one about uh exclusionary discipline. Uh that's another one of the principal expectations priorities that we're working on. And I'm pleased to say uh for the high school division, we've seen an eighteen percent drop in exclusionary discipline. Uh this year compared to last. Uh some of that can be attributed to the initiative uh PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. Uh which is being rolled out in three cohorts. We're in cohort one uh this year. Cohort two will expand with fifteen more schools, cohort three, uh thirty more schools and so on. But uh the 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 system simply put is designed to enhance relationship building. Uh trust and rapport between students um and their teachers and families. Um and gives educators other options rather than exclusionary discipline. And we're really pleased with promising results so far.
Just one last comment if I might, yeah.
Sure.
That's great information. I hadn't tracked the data year over year. I'm glad it's going down. I really hope we start a trend of that getting towards zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh member Higgins, your mic's on.
Yeah, just one question. I remember fifteen years ago, the board got engaged in the issue of outreach to the homes of some of these kids. It was a a cultural issue that was being promoted by the by the uh community. We had some pretty strong statements in regards to that, that that made a big difference. I don't know if we're doing anything in regards to that. But for those that with the higher risk of absences and the top contact, coming to the school is from a cultural standpoint. Not something they're comfortable with? And is it something that we've looked at or would look at to do in the future? Because the results that we heard from other school districts was really positive. And um and it was right after the time too of of we're dealing with the issues of of parents in poverty. Top three goals of survival, entertainment and relationships, and education doesn't factor in there real much. But if they develop that relationship with the school, within it's going to create a connection. And having connection home is so important. So I just wondering if that's is out there and and a what-if land. Uh obviously, if we have enough money to even keep the place open, but uh uh in line with that, is that a discussion?
Sure. Thank you, Member Higgins. So it does still exist in our district. We have some of our um school cultural liaisons that exist. It is just not uniform throughout all of our schools. We have some that are by school and some that are sort of by each community. This is something here at the district that we're trying to help expand and really focus on that communication with families and building those connections. As we talked about with the principal expectations card, really making sure that if those schools don't have a cultural liaison within their school. Or within their community, that they have a trusted adult that they might be able to go to and talk about why they might not be at school. So this is something that we're really looking at in terms of the ways that we engage with the family, even at the district level. To ensure that we're working with families as our partners, to really have an understanding about why students are missing school. Even if it's a cultural understanding of such, um and to really try to address those issues and change the narrative around attending school.
Okay, so uh so Mike, I have just a couple more questions. Um so. At what point in the process? Does a a student who is, how many days do they have to miss before they get some adults' attention? I know the classroom teacher will know right away. But is is it the registrar who follows up? Is it? And then how, what does that look like? Is that a follow-up involved the student and the parent or or both? Or what what does that look like?
Well, I'll thank you for the question. I'll I'll start and I may hand that off. Something that um I want to share that's uh we're pretty excited about is we have an internal uh student data platform that we've just rolled out to staff. And it has real-time information every single day. And we have metrics in there. Um that we that correlate, for example, attendance to GPA, to the Fs that they're receiving. And so these are sort of these on-track metrics and early indicator systems that not only our teachers have access to, our counselors have access to. Our principals have access to and our district leadership has access to. Um we've been working hard to train our principals and we just recently have rolled that out to our staff. Um and and what you what what you're talking about in the research is absolutely critical. Early intervention, you know, that's when it makes the greatest difference. And and if we can catch our our students um as early as possible. And and provide those very specific interventions and support systems, as well as a caring adult that just says, I see you and I notice you. And you are welcome here. Just making those types of connections early and often is really what the research says will make the biggest difference. And of course, we need to stick with that. Um so we're very excited about that opportunity and I don't know if you wanted to add to that.
Yeah, I would just add that um. A family will receive a autodial or phone call at the end of the day, in the evening if a student hasn't shown up unexcused. Uh and typical best practice in a school is if if a student goes two days, unexcused absence, no communication with the family. Uh the school should be working to reach out uh by phone to make contact with that family.
Great.
And it goes from there. Um I would say that that task is typically easier at our smaller schools than our larger schools. Um and that gets, you know, into staffing and the manner in which we support school administration and counseling staffs.
Exactly.
But but two days is the is really the threshold when you want to reach out.
And and that's great, cause I I just don't want the public thinking we're waiting till they hit eighteen days before we do anything. Somebody is watching and intervening uh all the time. And so I I I just wanted to make that uh clear. We have done some, um and I know uh Tony mentioned. The advert- the the improved um outreach in terms of our social media and, you know, attendance is important. How are we reaching out? How are, what are the ways that principals are actually reaching out to families? And students, for that matter, cause everybody's not on social media.
Yeah, absolutely. And it it happens in a variety of ways. I think the most common of which is uh principals' weekly newsletters. Where they're emphasizing the priorities of the schools. We've we've definitely, a- as we have prioritized attendance. Uh as as district leadership, so have our principals. Um it takes the form of autodial or messages. Principals encourage teachers to emphasize it in classroom settings, um community events. Many of our schools do access social media platforms and promote attendance that way. Um and then, of course, Tony has mentioned our efforts at the district level through the the communications office to do the same.
Great.
I'll just add to that some other things that we are doing that we know might be non-traditional, but are doing things in those neighborhoods. Like going out and maybe hanging a door hanger and saying, hey, we missed you at school, just letting them know that we noticed you're not there. And maybe providing that callback number. Um the other thing is when we're out in the community, we have some attendance trackers. That are just there and available for the community to pick up, to reinforce the idea of what, missing two days of school? What is that real impact on the students' learning?
Great, thank you. Alright, um any other questions? Alright, um member lessons and then we'll pop back to Dr. B.
I just wanted to share that there may be an issue right now with our live stream.
Oh, there may be an issue with our live stream? Okay, uh I will report that to the proper person. They are working on it. Thank you. I see a, I see, I saw it. It's officially back up. Thank you. Alright, uh Dr. Bryant, any final comments before we transition?
Thank you, Madam President, and we appreciate the the discussion. Uh this is a very important indicator. And we look forward to our conversations about the other potential indicators that we'll monitor with our revised CCL goal.
Okay, great. And I'd like to thank you guys for your uh time and attention to um all of the data. Thank you. I and you know, I just think uh we know what we do, but the public doesn't know what we do. And so some of my questions really are so that the public understands the process. Somebody is watching out for their babies every single day, whether they're in school or not. We we know that. And and there there are um safeguards or safety nets in place. So I really thank you guys. Yes.
Yeah, Madam Chair, we appreciate the opportunity to answer for that same reason.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, that brings us. To item D, which is our first hour of public comment. And so th- this is a time on our agenda that we hear from our public. Uh we welcome your comments because they're very important to us. Uh the board has set aside an hour at the beginning of its meeting for those who have signed up to give public testimony. Uh we will go for an hour. Uh if if there's more than that, we will pick up again with the public comments at the end of our meeting. Um so this is the opportunity for us to listen and for the community to uh speak. Uh and share their views with us. Uh please note, um as you came into the room, there is a blue and white sheet that gives you a complete overview. Of the boardroom decorum and expectations. But all public comments are limited to three minutes. You will see a timer in front of the dais. And that timer will just track your three minutes. Uh at the, when your three minutes are up, then we will, uh your mic will be silenced. Uh but you'll get a thirty-minute beep, uh thirty-second beep, not thirty-minute, thirty-second beep. Uh to give you a notice to start, uh you know, concluding your comments. So when your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and direct your comments to the chair. That's me. Please understand that this is not a time for dialogue. The purpose of this agenda item is for you, again, to talk to us about what your view, about your views. Uh and your uh perspectives. If you have handouts that you wish to share with the board. Please give them to Ms. Foster to my left and she will make sure all board members will uh get that, get your handout. Or you can email them to schoolboard@asdktwelve.org. Uh so with that, um and assuming everyone has reviewed our. Audience participation guidelines in that blue and white sheet that's at the door. We would like to begin our public uh comment period. Uh we do not have any students signed up to testify tonight, so we will go to our first speaker and all of our speakers are in person. Mister David Carter, welcome, come to the podium. And you have three minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Okay, I can get this all, yeah, let's speak into a microphone, that would help. Okay, I'm ready. Hello, my name is Dave Carter. I am a retired Alaska lawyer. First, uh thank you to everyone in this room and everyone who supports public education and learning about new things. Second, thank you to those who support teaching and learning about how to think and how and why to ask questions. Also, uh thank you from a thank you that was in the newspaper to teachers. As Thomas Paine wrote in seventeen ninety-four, putting aside everything that might excite laughter by its absurdity. Or detestation by its profaneness and confining ourselves merely to an examination of the parts. It is impossible to conceive a story more derogatory to the almighty, more inconsistent with his wisdom. More contradictory to his power than this story is. Paine was referring to the Christian story. About Jesus to be at once both God and man, and also the Son of God. Celestially begotten, on purpose to be sacrificed, because they say that Eve in her longing had eaten an apple. Uh Mister Paine is the real patriot here. Thomas Paine, not Jesus, is. Paine is the real patriot here. Thomas Paine, not Jesus, is one of the men credited with coming up with the name of our country. Thank you to students. Schoolteachers, parents, principals, superintendents, commissioners and governors for keeping Jesus stories. Out of our elementary schools. To include them would be unconstitutional. And not what our tax dollars or public schools are for. And please remember to be nice to people. Having different ideas or information is normal, as is sharing it. That is how we learn. Two book recommendations, so well within my three minutes. The first one, Richard Dawkins. It's called The Magic of Reality: How We Know It's Really True, a wonderful book. And the other one is Susan Jacoby, Freethinkers. It's a history of American secularism. Again, another wonderful book. I think a lot of people involved with education would be interested in the chapter titled Reason Embattled. It's particularly applicable to what we're dealing with now. Thank you very much for listening to my comments. I'm going to hang around in the back a little bit for people in the audience if they. Would like to have these books. I have just one of each. I'll give them to them. There's the thirty second warning. I'm well within my time. I know your jobs are difficult at times about this kind of things, but thanks again.
And thank you very much. Next, we have Barbara Clark. Welcome, Ms. Clark. You have three minutes.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Barb Clark and I teach at West. I've been there for twenty-three years. And I have testimony here that time is out to exactly three minutes on another topic. And I think I'll do it next time.
Okay.
Because I was listening to, and so I'm just off the top of my head now. I was listening to your conversation about absenteeism, which is huge. Some days. Some days, a third of my class isn't there. And. The what I heard coming up that I kept kind of getting stuck on was, will will they do the work? Can they make up the work? And what I kept waiting to hear that I didn't hear was, the work isn't the point. The work is an artifact that if you write a paper. Or you do an exercise in class, you're going to hand it to me and I'm going to read it. It has an audience of one. I'm probably honestly, there are a hundred and forty of you. I'm going to skim it. Because it wasn't the point. The point was what happened in your head. When you did it. It's like when you go to the gym, the reps aren't the point. What happens in your muscles is the point. And. When we focus on that end product, as if we're making widgets. I think too, kids do get, well, I wrote it. I wrote it from home, but I wrote it. It's there. I did the work. Give me my points. That's the important transaction and it's not. And I like that you talked about building relationships. But I think I think we need to rethink. And I was, I've I've actually been rethinking. How do I get them to come into the classroom? I I decided, for instance, this week to do a. Have them peer edit rather than just hand in, you know, and and now, okay, exchange computers and here's a here's a rubric and you'll look at her his and he'll look at yours and talk about it. And you don't even have to, you know, I'm not even going to see what you scored, but I want you to talk about what you wrote. And I think we do. We need to do more of that. And I think the reason that we don't. Is because it's not quantifiable. And we don't like that. It will not generate data. It will generate relationships. Relationships are fuzzy. And it's really hard to demonstrate, you know, at the end of class, well, you know, the here are the widgets we made. And I don't. That's as far as I thought it through in the two minutes I decided not to review this.
You can email us.
I will email you that, or I'll come back because I like the way I read it. But I've twenty-eight seconds left. But I I I think. I think it's important. What you said about how to about fostering relationships. I think that's something we as a district need to refocus on.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And that brings us to our third speaker, Mr. Corey Engst, in person. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you, President Bellamy, school board members. I'd like to refocus some of my time on your work session and the process that you went through in discussing. The budget and and the cuts that you are considering. The governor's budget proposal was an insult to every student, family and staff member who works for ASD in schools across Alaska. To position you are in to eliminate programs. Reduce staff. Or potentially eliminate facilities is contemptuous. Any program you cut. Will not help ASD with inadequate stat state funding into the future. And those programs will be gone. Probably forever. Any staff you cut will exacerbate the problem of overcrowding overcrowded classrooms. Add to the already unsurmountable number of student behaviors and negatively impact your school board goals. Our student learning environments are already strained due to staffing shortages. Do not increase your PTR. Any cut to facilities will negatively affect our neighborhood schools. We heard from those communities last year loud and clear, and they they shared a resounding, no, do not close our neighborhood school. And you recall, those to be closed were mostly Title One schools. Closing schools has a disproportionate impact, at least in our. First round on our Title One families and communities. Do not let your legacy be one of dismantling the Anchorage School District. Do not let your legacy be one of taking away the rich diversity of our programs, our schools. That make us the educational superpower we are in the state. And a great role role model for others around the nation. Instead, I suggest you make your legacy one of advocacy and triumph. That when things got tough, you all stood together. You need to lead for all district staff. For all parents, for all our students. For all of our community members. We must stop hemorrhaging certified educators and all our educational support staff. It's unsustainable. You are elected leaders of the Anchorage School District. Do not be part of the dismantling of our district. Instead. Lead the charge. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, our next speaker is Caitlin Poindexter. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Can I stand?
Sure you can. You might lift the mic up. Oh, there she is. Yeah. Nope. Push it till it turns green.
And I'm loud naturally, so I was like, oh. My name is Caitlin Poindexter and I am a parent, first and foremost, of twin daughters who go to Denali Montessori in her second grade there. And then I also, in my personal life, I suppose, even before I had them, I got a master's degree in college student services, services administration. And have served or worked at. UAA, UAF, Mutet Nowvat in Bethel and APU. So I have a fair bit of insight in Alaska as to kind of how we prepare, how students did in their freshman year. Freshmen were kind of my specialty. And so I saw how schools prepared them or did not prepare them. Right, to be successful at college. And a lot of what I saw, which was exciting, was when they would do well, and I think their K-12 education served them. But it's given me a lot of thought and insight. I've been in Alaska for sixteen years in terms of what we can do differently and particularly with ASD. Obviously, because my children are now very much a part of it. And I think about this all the time. And one of the things that keeps coming up for me is bureaucracies are not efficient. Right? They're not designed to be efficient, ever. That's not their strength. They have other strengths, but that's not one. And right now, with the enormous deficit that we are facing. We need efficiencies desperately. And so I keep thinking. I think the district needs to run. Like a bunch of small businesses. We need to follow my guidance, of course. I'm like, don't be right. So I would like to see us run the district like a bunch of small businesses versus the bureaucracy that we've kind of had to become. And I know it evolves. It happens over years or time. I also Googled the average size of a US school district in our country. It's five to six schools. So then I Googled, how many schools are in ASD? Ninety-seven. So I'm like, oh, okay. So I feel like we're setting ourselves up to fail if we continue to run it as we do because that's not, you're one human as our superintendent, right? We've got seven board members. And so. It's still a heavy lift, but as I was thinking about it, doing doing the numbers, which is not my strength, but I thought I'd try to work it out. That would be about thirteen to fourteen schools per board member. And I have looked on the website and I see that you do represent different schools. But I think that would be very meaningful. I think it would make Superintendent Brian's job Bryant, sorry, not Brian. Brian's easier or more doable. And I think it would allow. Us to break down their bureaucracy, right, a little bit and to get to know schools up close and personal. So I'd ask, let's stop running the system as we have because it's not serving us any longer. And we've heard a lot of it because of post COVID, right? So we need to focus on thinking what we can do differently and better. And efficiently, efficiently being my main word. I'd like to see four day school weeks potentially. I'd like to see a longer school day, so.
Your time's up, but you can email your comments to us.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And that concludes our persons wishing to be heard.
Former Representative Millet was trying to get online.
I'm sorry?
I got a text from former Representative Millet that she was trying to get online to testify.
Well, she wasn't signed up, but and I don't see.
We just didn't know if there was a message from her or not. Okay.
I don't see her.
Thank you.
She can maybe email us. Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to item E on our agenda, which is our consent agenda.
Madam President. Before we start our regular part of our business meeting here. I'm very interested in in resolving the issue of how Robert's Rules of Order controls debate. And the motions for amendments to main motions. It came up two meetings ago. And I believe it. It's been resolved now by the experts that were consulted. That it is appropriate for members to speak to a main motion on the floor. And then at some point during their speaking to the main motion to move an amendment. At that point, to continue discussion of amendment, it requires a second. But their ability to speak about the main motion and deficiencies or things about the main motion they're concerned with, and then to move an amendment to correct those. Is in order. And I was hoping that to get an official ruling of the chair on that and get it on the record. So we just can put that issue to rest.
Okay, thank you, Member Donley. Any other board members have comments on that before I? So I I appreciate you bringing it up because I have not been here. I mean, I have not chaired a meeting since that situation happened. I I agree, a board member can speak. To a motion. And in speaking to that motion, they can. Offer an amendment. I think what threw me off at the November twenty-first meeting is the fact that you readily handed out your amendment before you made your comments. So in the future, if we can just speak to our. I mean, so in the future, that that's what that's what threw me off. So board members are not restricted from speaking. I've never. I don't think I've ever restricted a board member. I may have questioned whether or not there was a second. And I did that on the twenty-first because because the amendments were being passed out before your comments on the main motion. So I stand, I so I stand corrected. I think we are probably saying the same thing. But in the future, I will make sure that I honor every board member's. Right to speak to a motion. And in speaking to the motion, they may, of course, make an amendment to that motion. Is there any questions? All right, thank you.
Just to clarify, it it's completely still in order to be able to pass out ahead of time. Proposed amendments so that members could review those and have those. Be prepared to deal with.
Well, we do ask members to send in their amendments ahead of time. So you are absolutely correct.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Right, so we are at our item E consent agenda. We after that. After our clarification.
Madam President, I would ask that we pull. Consent agenda item number eight, ASD memorandum number zero seven five, sale surplus property.
Is that number? Seven or eight?
I believe it was.
Oh, it's eight now. Okay. All right.
And then number twelve, ASD memorandum number zero eight one, joint resolution of the Anchorage Municipal Assembly and the Anchorage School Board. And those would be action items, I believe, F two and F three.
Oh, okay, so we are pulling, we have, we are pulling memorandum zero seven five. That will become under action F two. And we are pulling memorandum zero eight one. Which under non-action will become F three.
Madam President.
Yes, under action, I'm sorry.
Madam President.
Yes.
I I would pull, I guess it's item five now. It was four on the original agenda, November twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes.
That will become F four under action. No, we have a guardrail report. The guardrail was under consent. No. So we have four items under action. The guardrail report. For F two, we have. Memorandum zero seven five. F three, we have memorandum zero eight one. And F four, we have the November twenty-first meeting minutes. Seeing, hearing none.
Yep, so if those items pulled, I would move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Moved in second to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any opposition to the motion? Seeing, hearing none. The consent agenda is approved as amended. That brings us to our action items. We will start with F one. Which is our guardrail report. Again, that report was given to you in the December first. Board connect. Member Jacobs.
Madam President, I move to accept guardrail report for number two. Superintendent will not operate without a plan to develop a diverse or culturally responsive workforce.
Your second?
Second.
Moved in second to to accept the guardrail report. Is there any? Opposition to the motion? Seeing none. The guardrail report is approved. That brings us to F two. Which is memorandum number zero seven five.
Point of order, Madam Chair, did we vote the consent agenda? What remained of it?
I'm sorry?
Did we vote the concern? Okay, thank you.
We did. Sorry. Am I going too fast?
I I think it was unanimous consent.
It was.
The amended version, yeah.
For the amended version.
Madam President, now that we're on action item F two, ASD memorandum number zero seven five. My understanding is that the district administration is asking that the board postpone this item. As we're still awaiting additional information. Before we move to postpone, it might be helpful to have a date as to which meeting might work. What's that? How how much longer do we need to obtain that information?
That's great.
To the President, Mr. Ratliff, would you like to provide information?
Thank you. Through the President, Member Jacobs, I spoke with the school and the principal and they're one of their PTA to look at this a little more to see if it might be a. Biable option to put this geodome back in place or find the money to construct it. So maybe the second meeting in January might be a time that we could bring it back or we could do it time indefinite. And then. Whenever they're ready to bring it back, we can. Right now, this piece of equipment is in the district's warehouse and it's been unused, so. If you want to make it time indefinite, that would be great. And then we'll bring it back whenever we have a decision.
Okay.
Well, with that said, I would move to postpone to our meeting scheduled for January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Second.
Moved in second to postpone memorandum zero seven five to our January twenty-third meeting. Is there any discussion? Any opposition? Seeing, hearing no opposition. That memo zero seven five is postponed. That, uh, memo zero, seven, five is postponed until January twenty third. Thank you. Item F three is our joint resolution.
Madam President, I moved to approve AST memorandum number zero, eight, one joint resolution of the Anchorage Municipal Assembly and Anchorage School Board in support of a fair inflation-adjusted state funding required to maintain a quality public school system and increase student performance. Second.
Moved in second to, uh, accept memorandum number zero, uh, eight, one. Um, I think after meeting with, uh, we had a joint. A, a rules committee meeting. There was only one change to the report at that time. Ms. Lessons, can you tell us that one change?
Um, yes, and actually I would appreciate the administration's maybe updating confirmation.
Okay.
The confer, um, Mr. Ratliff joined us at that rules meeting. And, um, on page three, um, originally the estimate that the administrative administration provided the board was that the scale of our deficit could lead to the loss of approximately six hundred and fifty educators, paraprofessionals and key support staff. And at the rules meeting, Mr. Ratliff suggested that might be able to be downgraded. And I just wonder from our conversation earlier. Would you change your rules? Rules committee meeting update of four hundred and fifty personnel? Through the allocation of seventy one million dollars of fund balance? I mean, are we still talking? What is your estimate at this point in time?
So through the president, you know, if we do have the, if the board authorizes the seven hundred or seventy one million in fund balance. And we get to a deficit of roughly thirty million, that's, you know, really high ballpark, three hundred positions, depending on where, where we take it, maybe less. Um, but if the board doesn't wanna, doesn't have the super majority to go down to that five percent fund balance level and the deficit's closer to forty five million, then that's where that four hundred and fifty positions approximate came in. So I think to that point, it would be fair to say four hundred and fifty, as we haven't taken that super majority vote yet. Um, but I'll leave that up to the board for the final. But that's why we changed the number, because we changed the estimate on our fund balance.
Then I, I would move to amend the document to read at the top of page three. Whereas the Anchorage School Board may be forced to eliminate approximately six hundred and fifty educators, paraprofessionals and key support staff in May twenty twenty four. Unless legislative action is taken by the middle of February twenty twenty four in advance of the AST board's obligation to pass a balanced budget for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year to replace six hundred and fifty with four hundred and fifty.
So we were only replacing the number at the top of.
The number from six hundred and fifty to four hundred.
Was that page three?
It is the top of, the first paragraph of page three. I just read the, the.
Thank you. She just read the whole thing.
Second.
Okay, did we have a second? Okay, moved in second to change the number at the top of page three in the memo in memo zero, eight, one. To four fifty and not six fifty. Any other discussion? I would just like to thank members Lessons and Jacobs for their tireless effort in working with the assembly, uh, task force or joint task force on this memo. Um, it, uh, because it, it really took some time and some thinking. I'd also like to thank Mr. Ratcliffe. He has been amazing. Steady, calm and indulging. I mean, it's, it's great. I appreciate you too. So with that, um, the motion before you is to approve, it is to, um, amend the number in the memo at the top of page three to four fifty instead of six fifty. We'll have to do a, a voice. Yes, let's do a voice vote. On the amendment.
Point of order, that's not a dollar figure. It's a.
It's just the number.
It's a number.
Yeah. Thank you. Good catch. Just four fifty instead of six fifty. Thank you. And we'll do a voice vote because everybody doesn't have a computer tonight. All right, whenever you're ready.
Member Higgins? Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes. And that amendment passes unanimously. Thank you for that. And so now we're voting on the main motion as amended. We're back to the main motion as amended. Um, do we need, do we need a? We've already moved, so we're just voting now on the main motion as amended. Roll call.
Member Donley?
If there's no discussion, yes.
Member Higgins? Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes. And that, uh, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And that brings us to item F four, which is the November twenty first meeting minutes. Member Donley.
Thank you, Madam President. A while back, the board changed how we keep minutes and went to a system that greatly abbreviated the minute format. Uh, when we did that, I supported it from an efficiency point of view, but I never anticipated that minutes would not reflect some very significant, um, substantive events during meetings. Um, in this set of minutes, um, under the discussion of the bond proposals for this coming, uh, April, um, there were, I proposed two amendments to that main motion, um, that are not identified in the minutes. Um, and when I raised this with the secretary, she explained that she had received guidance, um, saying that if an amendment failed for not having a second, it wouldn't be reflected in the minutes. I think that's not the, uh, the right answer to that. I think when it's a, such a significant and substantive substantive amendment, it should be reflected in the minutes. I agree with what you said earlier in this very meeting, Madam President, that it's important that the public understand the process that we go through here. And the actual word transparency is one of the district's core principles. And not reporting substantive, uh, motions, even if they fail to get a second, is a direct violation of that principle of transparency. It serves no public purpose while having the negative effect of, um, not allowing the public to understand what actually happened at the meeting. You know, during my six years in the House, State House and ten years in the State Senate, I can't remember a single time when an amendment on the floor of, of the body was not seconded, at least for the purposes of discussion. And additionally, the text of every amendment, whether seconded or not, was reported in a legislative journal. Um, so legislative journal, if we were functioning like the legislature would have set out the amendments I proposed at that time and then noted that they failed for not having a second. I think that's the much superior method of keeping a record of the meeting and meetings and the actions that occur at these meetings to not reflecting that it ever even happened. Um, you know, Robert's rules suggests that when boards are particularly small membership, they should not even require a second. And, uh, we've received guidance that we're at kind of the breakpoint with seven members and it's appropriate for us to continue to require a second. But we're, but, but to not even show it in the record, I think is a, is a bridge too far here. And I believe that we ought to adopt a policy that, that every proposed amendment is reflected in the minutes. Um, whether or not it receives a second, because there's only seven of us here. And even the opinions and the, and the arguments of one of us is significant to the people of Anchorage and should be recorded. Um, with that, I'd move to have the secretary amend the minutes to reflect the two amendments that I proposed on, um, the bond proposition, which was action number two, AST memoration memorandum number fifty four. And in the, uh, if I get the date right here. The November twenty first, twenty twenty three minutes.
So could you repeat your, uh, your motion, please? I know it's a regular, the November twenty first meeting. Do you want them altered?
Yeah, I'd like the minutes, uh, uh, we, I would like the, um, the minutes tabled to allow the secretary to amend them to reflect the two amendments that were proposed to action matter number two, which was the approval of the bond proposition memorandum number fifty four. For that evening's, uh, meetings minutes.
Madam President, point of information.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Could I, um, receive confirmation if we're, our current operating procedure regarding documenting motions that don't receive a second stems from guidance from our parliamentarian expert we consult with?
Yes, it does. Uh, actually, when we transition to action only minutes, which is very similar to what the assembly does. Um, it's been three years since we switched uh, at the advice of Ms. McFarlane. Uh, and under her guidance, even as early as, I think, August of this year. So we have documented our minutes, the way we do minutes are action minutes. And we show the action of the body. Um, in terms of, uh, how the board, how the board votes on, eh, on, uh, on a, a main motion or an amendment to the motion.
Can I, another point of information if I might, Madam President? Um, I, I don't have access to our YouTube channel app. Do we know was the November twenty first board meeting uploaded to YouTube?
It is.
Okay.
It is. The entire thing is there.
Okay. So yeah, I, I, if I, if I might, um, because the entire meeting is uploaded, um, I'm comfortable either way, the rule of the board, but if our parliamentarian has advised us to review or record our minutes this way. I think we've historically followed her recommendations and that's fine here. Um, if, if we weren't recording our full meetings on YouTube and to the best of my knowledge, we're still adding video chapters to those meetings. So they're easily do it, um, to access specific portions of the meeting when we discuss different topics. You know, that might be different, but I, I think our meetings are very accessible. Um, so that I guess that's, those are my wonders and thoughts, and I appreciate the leeway for the point of information. Thank you.
Okay. So then, uh, the November twenty first men, um, meeting was streamed and that video is online, full transparency. Uh, any other questions? The motion before you is to uh, table the November approval of the November twenty first. Um, minutes. Is there a second?
Madam President, just a point of information, where, where the motion is to amend?
No, the motion is to table. So that table, table, table the minutes while they get amended. That's what the motion is.
Okay.
If I got it right, Member Donley. Yes.
Yes, Madam President, that was my motion.
There is, there, is there a second to, to the motion?
Got a question.
Question.
Can I do that?
Yes.
Um, uh, so what we're doing is if we make this change, we're going to be doing this in the future then as well for any proposals or is this a one-time exception or what do we? What, what's the thought?
I believe the advice from the parliamentarian, um, not a member of this board, but from outside um, really doesn't fit a legislative body this small. Uh, we've seen this with Robert's Rules of Order. They were never designed for legislative bodies. That's why the state legislatures all over America use Mason's manual. Um, because Robert's Rules doesn't always work well with elected bodies. Um, and the significance of a proposed amendment is self-evident and should be reflected in the minutes, in my opinion, when it's an elected body versus a club. You know, Robert's Rules of Order wasn't designed for elected bodies. It was designed for your, your, you know, your library club or book club or groups like that most of the time. And the fact that we're such a small board, you know, exasperates that issue too. Because it really denies anybody who's in the minority of one any, any acknowledgement of even what they proposed or, 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 or moved at the meeting, if it wasn't seconded.
So I have, I, I have used Robert's Rules of Order now for three years. Uh, and while I do not get it right all the time, that is my effort and my desire. Um, action minutes are different. And we talked about this when we moved to action minutes. Uh, motions, amendments, unless they get a second, they don't get a vote. So there's no board action. And that is how we have operated. So, uh, Ms. Foster is doing exactly what the board wants her to do. If this board wants to track every motion that they make for perpetuity, then we better change our bylaws. And we better change how we do business because that is not the, the whole, the, the idea is not to track uh, unsecond motions, but it is to track the, the actions that the board take. And in order to do action, you have to have a second. If we're going to change to Mason's or something else, then somebody, I mean, we need to have that discussion as well. So I, 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 um, is there any other discussion? Um, I, I from anybody? Yes, Member Donley.
Thank you for leaving, Madam President. I just say when it's a substantive matter, like an amendment to a main motion, that's of such significance that it ought to be reflected in the official record and not make the average citizen sit through, you know, a four hour video trying to identify what happened in it. I think this is completely consistent with one of our core district principles, which is transparency. Uh, I'm not asking that every motion or every proposal ever made be reflected. But I do think an action, uh, system of recording minutes, that was an action. And it made a, a very significant policy decision as a result of that. There was a policy decision by this board not to do with the amendment proposed by failing to second it. That's legitimate function of this board. But I still think it's an action and it had, it's a distinction without a meaning because it had the result of rejecting the two amendments.
And so it, just so, uh, to, so the public is aware, um, our recordings, our meetings are live streamed and they are time stamped. So if you want to go right to action items, you can go right to action items. You do not have to sit through the entire video.
I, I, I understand, uh, Member Donley, where you're coming from, and I also appreciate, uh, as in, uh, Margo's, uh, Margo's, um, uh, assessment of this. I think until something is seconded, it's just a discussion issue. And we don't capture discussions in the debate. It's kind of like raising it to the board saying, is this something would you like to vote on? Would you like to support? And if the answer is no, then it's still just a discussion issue. And we don't capture all the discussion. We may want some of our just comments to be in there, but we don't put it in there. And so I, I tend to take this as until it's seconded, it's not really something that the board has taken up to have action or even consider it. So I. So I, I tend to not, for that reason, I'm not going to second it.
Any other comments? So the motion before us is uh, to um, table November twenty-first until they, uh, minutes until they have been amended to show um, motions that failed. Call for the vote. Oh, was there a second? Sorry. There is no second. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Madam President, I move to approve the November twenty-first meeting minutes.
Is there a second? Moved in second to approve the November twenty-first meetings, minutes, meeting minutes. Um, discussion. Go on. Member Donley.
I'd just like to point out the irony that that entire discussion won't be reflected in the minutes.
And you are absolutely correct.
Madam President? If I might.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that it won't be in the minutes, but um, the recording will be on YouTube, which I'm pretty sure I have my dates aligned, wasn't, had not yet occurred when you were last in the legislature. So, um, but I think we have a higher level of transparency than, than um, late nineties, you know.
We were talking about bringing some humor to the board meetings earlier. Now, here we go. All right.
Glad to help. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, so the mo- um, the motion before us is to approve the November twenty-first meetings, minutes, minute, meeting, meeting minutes. Those M's are getting me. All right, vote.
Member Higgins? Member Holloman?
Ironically, yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Donley?
No.
Member Lessons? Yes. Member Wilson?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
And the November twenty-first um, meeting minutes pass. Uh, six to one, six days, one day. Thank you. Okay, next we have our um, non-action items. They will be back before you in January next year. Um, is there any? Anyone wants to pull anything from there before we move on? We, we had a great work session this afternoon, so I thank you guys for that. Moving on to our, we don't have any other public comment, so H is uh, done. We are now at the superintendent's update.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening, uh, community members. Uh, I'll keep my remarks brief. Um, but first off, I just want to express how blown away I am by our community that showed up for a second uh, community convening for college career and life writing. This was attended by hundreds of people yet again, um, to provide invaluable feedback on how we're going to cater the academy model to the unique workforce needs of Anchorage. It's exciting, um, and it's worth every penny in terms of investment in time, and we couldn't do it without the community. Uh, one of the things that we did at the community convening was unveil the portrait of a graduate, which I think will be a critical document informing our investments, our priorities, our time and resources, and for the public's awareness, the, the major tenants that define an ASD graduate are career and life skills, strong communication, a positive sense of self. And we want ASD graduates to be fully engaged learners. That didn't come from the superintendent or any individual school board member. It came from the entire community, and we're very proud of that work. So one of the next steps will be, we'll form dozens of tactic teams, formed ASD staff as well as community members, and each of those teams will be tasked with uh, creating and discussing the critical decisions that will make the academies of Anchorage a transformational process for our city. Uh, and, and of course, we did have a very robust conversation on the budget development process this afternoon. The board feedback that we received is invaluable. We'll take that information in stride and then update is needed because we want to make sure that the board has the information they need to prepare a balanced budget by the end of February. Um, but on that note, uh, you know, I wish the entire ASD community a wonderful holiday season. As a community, we've had ups, we've had downs, we've had lots of snow. And this is the time to enjoy our families and to recharge for twenty twenty-four. So that concludes my remarks.
Any questions for the superintendent on his remarks? Member Donley.
Well, not just on his remarks, but I want to bring up the question of the safety of our students under the guidelines relating to uh, transgender students. Um, I had posed this question to the superintendent. That's months and months and months ago, and you represented, you were going to get back to me to identify what safety protocols have, are in place for protecting all our students in that's, those circumstances. And I was just wondering when you think you might be able, able to get back to me on that.
Sure, uh, thank you, Member Donley. I'd be happy to prepare a summary in an upcoming board connect on safety protocols. And I would also want to inform the board of the scope of perceived safety issues, just so we're all aware as to how frequent these issues are, if they occur at all. And as I've shared in the past, uh, we do want to await guidance from uh, the US Department of Education as it relates to Title IX guidelines. So those are two different conversations, but we are tracking the safety protocol question, and I'd love to get you a summary on that.
So I had the privilege of attending the community convening as well. Can you just share a little bit about the tactic teams?
Sure. So every time we talk about the academies of Anchorage, different questions come up. Which academies are we going to launch? Which careers are we going to prepare students for? How are we going to make sure that students can receive transportation to those academies? I think keeps on going on. How are we going to transport students to an academy that may or may not be in their neighborhood? How is the city involved? How are we going to work with our, you know, workforce division to understand that the data, all these different questions? And the really special thing about the academies of Anchorage is that these questions will not be answered in a silo of ASD. They'll be answered by tactic teams that are comprised of ASD staff, but also the relevant community members. So think about it this way. So let's say that we're trying to troubleshoot. How do we transport a student to their health service career academy when they live far away? Well, I would request that we have uni-transportation folks in the room, ASD transportation folks in the room, and community members that can inform what is the plan to ensure access and opportunity for our academies? And how do we ensure that within every comprehensive school that those academies not only reflect the values of the community, but are linked and corroborated with data that they are tied to the workforce demands of tomorrow? So I think that's really exciting. And as I've shared multiple times, I sound like a broken record to board members, but the special thing about academies is that they're not solely owned by the school district. I, I envision that twenty years down the line, our Chamber of Commerce, our Development Corporation, our business partners, our educators will all say, this is not about ASD. Our academies are central to our workforce development strategy, and those major decisions are all being coordinated by tactic teams. Um, one that I want to shout out specifically would be the tactic team tasked with formulating our freshman academies. So um, this time next year will be a semester into our freshman academy model, which will be at all comprehensive high schools. So we formed a tactic team of community members. Uh, we had some individuals, um, from one of the higher ed entities, ASD folks and others, and they created some of those initial plans that we're ready to unveil very soon. Um, and they prepared a recommendation for senior staff to review, and then we'll also present to the board the culmination of their recommendation for what freshman academies look like. So imagine the freshman academy tactic team times twelve, and that's how we're going to operationalize the academies of Anchorage. So it's really special and it takes a lot of time for our different community members, but at the community convening, we essentially divided up the two hundred people amongst all the different tactic teams, and they essentially got to choose which one that they want to be a part of based on their interests or skill sets or what they're passionate about, and that's a very special thing.
Any other questions? Yes. Member Lessons?
Um, thank you. A question that I have that hasn't come up in the budgeting conversations we've had thus far, and again, we've seen a pro forma, which is status quo. And we don't have a freshman academy in our status quo. What budgetary? I think I asked this last time too. What do we know about any budgetary investments that are going to be required to stand up the freshman academy? Or is that something that's going to be drawing from the fifteen million dollar grant? Or, or yes and yes?
That, that's a great question. So we're still determining what exactly will be funded from the grant, and just for the community's awareness, we received fifteen million dollars from the United States Department of Education. So I just want to underscore that. We have champions and heroes in DC, and I know that we have some champions and heroes in Juneau. I know they're there, but we need you to come out. So that's number one. Mic drop. Number two, uh, you know, there's still a, a lot of decisions that have to be made in terms of, you know, what are the academies in general going to look like? One of the things that makes academies special in other places is that essentially they're small learning communities. So that potentially means more counselors. It potentially means a dedicated administrator that's really owning the academies. And right now, our school board invested in academy coaches, which are really those liaisons that spearhead that work to connect the schools to the business community at large. So one of the more complicated things that we're taking on as a leadership team is determine what is that going to look like for ASD? What can we afford? And what should we bring to the board to inform our investments to ensure that our academies are successful? I wish I could speak to the specifics and line items today, but I, I do want the board to know that we're in those conversations and we want to be transparent as to what the cost will be, because we're going to truly, um, you know, ask for your support to make that investment uh, for the academies. One thing to keep in mind though, as a board, and we know this, um, the academies are being built over the course of four years. So that investment may not all be required at once, but looking towards freshman academies, let's say that we need an extra counselor. Those are the types of things that will present during the budget process, but I don't have a specific line item that I want to discuss publicly at this time.
Follow up?
Separate question. Um, there exists at this time is a, an entity, I don't know what to call it, an organization um, creation, um, called the Aliesca Reading Institute. And it's my understanding that the legislature authorized about five million dollars for it. It's was designed to support about a hundred students. And I guess number one, are any, is Anchorage School District or any ASD students receiving support from the Aliesca Reading Institute currently? And is there anything, and the question two? What's that?
Is public for, if a public school student?
Yeah, they're like helping just a few other districts around the state. I just want, I mean, it's an entity that the state has created. Are we benefiting from it? And is there anything that it offers that we're paying for? Is there, is it offering anything to districts that we're currently paying for?
Uh, I don't, Mr. Gessman, we're not currently involved with that, are we? Yeah, I didn't think so. So I know that it was quietly funded by the legislature this past year, and there is a movement to make that a permanently funded aspect of deed. I would need more information before I'd express any interest in committing to participating. Right now, the focus is on advocating for adequate funding for education. That's where I'm at.
So Ali, is it Aliesca what?
It's the Aliesca Reading Institute, and I wasn't advocating for participating. I'm just wondering if we need to advocate for our share of receiving, since we educate like a third of the students in the state.
Yeah, I would imagine they'll be reaching out at some point, but I would need more information on the value add of that.
Any other questions for the superintendent? So we are moving on to Jay. Uh, board member comments? Uh, who wants to kick us off? I'm gonna save Pat till last today. All right, Andy, you got it. Member Holloman?
I don't really have too much, other than I hope people have a great holiday and um, just be aware of the, the range of students and the range of stresses that are out there in the community that um, continue on right through the holidays. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Lessons? Let's just come on around.
Um, I, I guess I'll try to be brief too. Um, as I mentioned earlier with um, our student representative, uh, who's probably gone off to go study. Um, getting to listen in to the student advisory board meetings and then getting to share with them for a few minutes is really the hi- one of the very highlights of getting to serve on this board. Um, our students are brilliant, they're hardworking, they're thoughtful, they ask amazing questions. And um, it was my good fortune to then spend some time with um, some, uh, some of our, some of the high school students in a follow-up conversation um, later that week. And when I was at the high school, I overheard a student saying that she had just accepted, been accepted by her dream college in early admission. And it was just a really wonderful uplifting experience um, to be surrounded by engaged students who are curious and care deeply about um, their education. Um, so I will, and then I wanted to say thank you to the communications team for resurrecting our budget archives. Um, so if there are community members who are interested in understanding, how did we get to this point? There's like twenty years of hyperlink documents. If you go to the ASDKtwelve.org/fytwentyfive, that's the hub for this year's budget everything. There's a budget archives button, and you can go to the Wayback Machine. You can go see, you can go see how um, previous boards and superintendents dealt with uh, various iterations of static funding and shortfalls in funding. Um, I think it's really illustrative, and I appreciate the communications team making sure that it's there.
Yes, I had, like I said, the privilege of attending our community, second community convening. Um, and I, I want to thank you for talking about the tactic teams a little bit. I, I signed up for a tactic team. I'm on the family and community engagement tactic team. And we've already met, just going to throw it out there if none of the other tactic teams have met, um, which I bet they have though. So that work has already started, and I'm very excited that um, it's not just our, our district that gets to participate, but also our community um, gets to participate in those and in that development. So super exciting. And uh, this is our last board meeting of two thousand twenty-three, so happy holidays to everybody, and I wanted to take a moment to thank our diversity, equity, and inclusion and community engagement team. Boy, is that a, that's a mouthful. Um, I appreciated and valued what I heard from our senior director, Ms. Toni Riley, tonight, and it reinforces the importance of this team and its mission. And I'm excited about the work of the district's Equity Working Group and looking forward to hearing more about their work. So additional work being done here in the spring. And lastly, this tiny little team has taken on community engagement, which is near and dear to me. And um, I'm very pleased at the work that's being done and what I'm seeing and hearing about it, and um, look forward to continuing that work. So, thank you and happy holidays.
And thank you. So, Member Donley? Your comments?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, one public testifier tonight proffered a direct attack on one religion as he singled out Christians for ridicule via quote from a great American patriot, who however, was not an attendee at the seventeen eighty-seven Constitutional Convention. And misstated constitutional law in this nation by apparently suggesting any reference to Christian beliefs at public schools is unconstitutional. This nation was founded on monotheism as a core of Western civilization. And that is reflected in our founding documents and the writings of the actual delegates to the seventeen eighty-seven Constitutional Convention. Even the liberal US Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals has held that our national motto of "In God We Trust" can be displayed in public schools. And the pledge of allegiances, "One nation under God," can be recited in public schools. The academic discussion of all world religions is not unconstitutional, no matter how much some who are atheists or other, have other opinions might object to it. With that, I just wish everyone Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Member Donley. Mr. Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Um, had the opportunity to uh, visit Stream Academy, which is one of my, you said, schools this year. Um, it's a charter school, relatively small program, uh, but they're doing some amazing things and really um, was a pleasure to, to connect with staff there and um, see the unique things they're doing to bring um, uh, in a underappreciated, I think, um, aspect. in a underappreciated, I think, aspect of transitioning to college career and life readiness to our next generation of learners. With that said, it was a good reminder and centering to hear that some of the same fiscal challenges our district is facing. Our charter schools aren't exempt from them, and they are funded through the same formula. And I know charter schools, and rightfully so, have been garnering additional positive attention recently due to national rankings. We operate charters very uniquely here in Alaska, I'm aware, and we have some amazing programs doing some amazing work. Charter schools are still public ASD schools, and we choose to fund our charter schools through a formula that is frozen in time in 2017. And so I was, it was heartening to hear leadership of that building, you know, advocate for continued support for all public schools, which will include charter schools. So I think just something to keep in mind as we transition to advocacy in this next session. With that said, Members Wilson and I are both therapeutic foster parents. I didn't get to see Member Wilson's event, but and so you missed out, but there was a great performance by a South, a portion of the South Orchestra at the Denali Family Services Foster Care Events, and the students took their own time on a Friday evening, came and performed for the families, some great music. And so it, it made the experience that much more memorable for my foster youth. Makes best interest as to how to participate in orchestra, once they had the chance to do so. And so appreciate, and a shout out to the South High students. With that said, happy holidays to all. Great conversation tonight, and looking forward to seeing you folks again next year.
Thank you. And last but not least. Whoever you ready.
Maybe, Lee. Who knows? I got a lot of time left. I just comment usually about the speakers. The last speaker really hit me with the issue of what basically Apple did, and that is small. Excuse me one second. I gotta get rid of the Bluetooth with the phone, no question about it. But I'm, I'm, I'm interested in the comments you made about doing things differently in the small garage shop type approach, everything being different comparison. But in doing so, I remember back in 2016, we had for several years asked for data in regards to how we're doing academically for years growth at different schools and different grades, and told it wasn't existed. And then suddenly in August of 2016, it was rolled out that they had it all. But if we're going to look at the comparison between schools, I think that's really important information. I appreciate Member Lessons talking about funding for different schools that that need it and where we are. But it was revealing back then, and I think it would be revealing again. We had, I remember in third grade, the reading scores were all low, and it really didn't matter to the school. Then it focused on the curriculum because that was more the factor that was involved. But I do like the public involvement, knowledge of how the different schools are doing, how the different grades are doing. We didn't get into classrooms, but we did get into the grades, and it was revealing. And so I'm going to make some requests along those lines, but I like the idea of saying, okay, if we're going to look at things differently, that there's accountability that goes with it, though. There's assessments and accountability, and we look for the best practices that are working and what's, why is working better in some schools than others? And I think that would be a significant movement. I look forward to reading that document. I hope that Speaker submits it because she had a bunch of other ideas. They would been to some of the music events going in schools and all the holiday type activities. I did hear a couple of issues. One is the, just the sixth grade transition into the middle school, concerns about that and how that works. And my concern goes back, and I said it before, for those kids that are socially, emotionally learning, may not have been quite developed to go into the middle schools comfortable. What are we doing as a, as a district to help those students that we don't drop academically? Studies have shown they drop. You know, that we saw that before, and I have no objection to it because there were some advantages and disadvantages. I agree with that. But I think we should at least focus a little bit on what are we going to do? Is there some things we need to be planning on now at this point in time? And the same thing goes to the change with the starting times. We postponed the year because of the the difficulty it's going to be for some families out there with the, with daycare and some type of of care, after school, preschool. And, and we took this year to try to address that, look at it, whether there's activities in the schools before, after, or some adjustments. It's going to be a problem. We knew that going into it. I mean, the high school kids are not getting out before the young ones. And you can't just release them, and they often proved as caring for the, for the youngest kids for a short time. So I just, we, I hope we get into a discussion like that because the public's interested in it. I heard a number of questions coming in from both parents and from the teachers in regards to those two questions, and I think they're both appropriate within that. But the academic issue really is a good one, I think. That was the same year that they were advocating that we should expect people to grow less than a full year because they couldn't all be Michael Jordan. That's what they ran on, as if they're not capable of learning. Well, I think all kids are capable of learning, and we have to address that issue positively. But I think we need to look at the academics, where's growing, where's not, and in question why, like Member Lessons suggested, we need to put the resources to address those areas where it's not happening because all kids can learn. And other school districts are putting more to catch kids up in it, and not just a full year, but catching up. And we need to see what we can do, but we got to have the data first. And the data by grade, whether they're growing a full year or not, what percentage? It's really enlightening when we saw the data, and I think it would be good for the board to look at that again. So with that, I will probably wish everybody a happy holidays. I will wish Member Donley a happy Hanukkah and and a Merry Christmas. I'm going to be fair about this. I'm just, I'm willing to be more flexible in line with it, with wish everybody a happy holidays. Thank you.
I'm not letting you. You're not going last anymore.
I moved to adjourn.
So my comments will be brief, very brief. I do want to commend Rogers Park Community Council and Rabbit Creek for considering and initiating resolutions on behalf of very similar to our Joint Assembly Resolution to increase the BSA. I mean, they're working hard, and I know there are more community councils, but those are the only two I know of tonight. I would like to have the board consider our next, the date for our next, and I'll send it to you, but January 11th for our next Goals and Guardrail meeting so that we can get those finalized. I'll send those out. I'll send that information out to you, but if you can kind of hold it, January 11.
That's a Thursday, and we have a whole slate of come of.
Oh, we do?
We have, we have.
Oh, that's right. We're, we're a month late, right? Okay, so then the next week, which would be the 18th, right? Is that the next Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay, so it'd be the 18th. I forgot. We are going back. I was on a different. Because of the whole new year thing, we're not meeting on the second. We're meeting on the ninth, right? Which means our, okay, got it. I would like board members to think about the legislative fly-in, which is coming up as well as with our students. Now, we know we can't send all of us, and all of us are not able to go. But I will be working with the superintendent and with Amanda to see how many we can send students, how many students we can send. And we can afford to send because that's coming up in February, and, and that's a huge priority. I would like the board members to join me in inviting and encouraging parents to contact their public officials. As much as we talk about cutting budgets, people, everybody's got some values. Everybody's got some skin in the game. And it's going to take all of us asking for the same thing to get it done. So please, when you have the opportunity to talk with, when people are asking for things to not be cut, hear them, listen to them, but also encourage them to follow up with the, with their elected officials. And I'd also like the board members to just be aware that while I respond to the school board emails that come to the school board, people are separating us out. So you may get individual emails. Don't assume that I, that I've responded on your, on behalf of the school board because they're coming individually to each of you, to each of us, right? So just be aware of that. Our legislative priorities are on the website, and I will be bringing more information forward, not just on the legislative priorities, but on the Betty Davis Youth Summit, which is coming up in February. We are planning that event. It is not going to be during the school day this year. It'll be an evening event, which is, which I'm happy for. We don't have to bus kids anywhere and any of that. So more information will come on that. And the Dune Nelson Scholarship Fund is available to our students to apply for. That's 15, that's a $1,500 scholarship award from the AASB, the Association of School Boards, Alaska School Boards. And then finally, just, I'm glad 2023 is about over. I'm looking forward to 2024, but I do want to wish everyone and, and you and yours a wonderful holiday season. So, and thank you for your service, your hard work, your support. Whatever your role is in this city, we do thank you on behalf of the school board. Dr. Bryant, do you have anything?
Happy holidays and drive safe out there. Lots of snow.
All right. With that.
Moved to adjourn.
Moved in second to adjourn. Any opposition? Seeing and hearing none, we are adjourned.